Regular meetings are October 15th through 19th. We have a session. Please rise, people. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alvin Buoyan.
Here.
Garriga.
Here.
Hollering.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Maranti.
Here.
Nisan. Rosenthal.
Here.
Sauer.
Here.
Volo.
Here.
Presidente Pedro.
Here.
Warren Preston.
Can I have a motion, please, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 17th meeting and place them on file? An introduction, Rob? A second, please. Go on. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the city treasurer's reports as of August 51st and September 30th and place them on file? Can I have an introduction, please? Calvin. A second, Rob? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Committee reports. All these are on your desks. Can I have an introduction, please? Eileen? A second? Kamal? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we have some communications. The first is from the local DFW post inviting us all to the Veterans Day ceremony on Monday, November 11th, which begins at 10:15 with the laying of a wreath at the Veteran Monument at 7th Street Park, followed by a parade downward streak to the courthouse where there will be services and a guest speaker to devote more. The second communication is from the Mount Ray Homeowners Association. If you don't know who they are, that is actually the name of the condo development atop of Rossman Avenue and Academy Hill Drive. You should all read it because it's rather interesting and it's addressed to a number of local politicians and employees, including the police chief, the fire chief, pretty much everyone. And it's about a number of things, including, as I've been pointing out, their desire to find a second ingress and egress from their development. May I have an introduction, a second, to receive these communications and place them on file? Introduction? Rob? Second. Eileen? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have a list of bills, a monthly list of bills. Any questions?
I have a key question.
Okay.
The state finance committee of boards, what's that?
That's the, you know, the...
Tourism board.
The grants to various groups from the $20,000 that the tourism board gave. Now, this is one of the payouts.
Is that extra or just...?
No, so...
Yeah. That's right. They get paid as they submit their budgets.
Which is going to say what?
The same.
I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. I just stole the $12,800. Can you tell me what that's about?
That is $12,000 for the lawyers who are negotiating a lease contract.
Who hired them?
The mayor.
My independent.
I don't know. Because they hire a specialty labor lawyer.
Yeah, that firm has traditionally done the police negotiations. I haven't seen it though, I don't know. I know there's been some other employment mediation work.
Yeah, no, that was only $800 of it.
Okay.
Where the $800 come from?
No, the $800 is for a personnel issue that, you know, we really can't talk about. Whereas the $12,000 of it was for the police contract negotiation.
Why we can't talk about it?
Which?
The $800.
Well, it's somebody who has an issue with their department.
Going to the executive session.
I mean, they have to negotiate whatever. The lawyer had to get involved with the labor issue.
And this never came before the council?
Which?
The labor issue, even in an executive session meeting? Nobody knows? Well, you guys know, I'm the only one that doesn't.
No, none of us know, technically.
So where was that, like a settlement or something?
No, no, it was a proceeding based on somebody who had a personnel issue with the city and involved their employment status.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much limited to her... To the person's immediate supervisor and then the mayor above the supervisor. Not really our domain.
It's what I can see. Is there anything else on here that's new?
We have a new vendor, which is Berkshire Funding Group. That is what used to be Johnny's Ideal. They have a new name because they're now Chad and Printing and also Berkshire Funding Group.
What is Berkshire Funding Group doing?
It's what formerly known as Johnny's Ideal Printing.
And what else you said? What else you said?
Well, they have two vendor names now. One is Chad and Printing and the other is Berkshire Funding Group.
Thank you.
Do you know why? Can you break that up for me, Tracy?
That's the way that the invoices came in. I don't know if it's their transition. Different departments purchasing.
And then on North Fitzgerald. Excuse me?
Yes.
So this lawyer group gets $12,000 every time they do the police negotiation?
Every time. This is for a number of hours. This is... This represents...
It's just billed on an hourly basis.
On an hourly basis. And it's... It's only part of the bill, actually.
It's part of the bill?
Yeah.
There's another bill?
Yeah.
Goes more than $12,800.
Yeah, it'll end up being... Well, the $800 is for the other issue. The total fee is going to be $17,500.
It was arguing or something? What happened?
Excuse me?
Arguing or something?
No, just, you know, billable hours for the lease contract negotiation. Who knows? We weren't privy to it at the council. So, may I have a motion, a second, to pay the bills? Introduction? Kamal, second. Calvin? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Wait, I'm sorry. I just have one more question about... I'm just confused about this $12,000. Was the police committee or the chair involved in that?
No, not.
Nope. I thought that was in the original agreement that I was supposed to be president.
It's very...
I don't like that. You don't even know what we're really voting on. And he wasn't even there. I mean, it's a private meeting, it's a private meeting, but the chair of police should have been there at least. And we're just going to be...
The agreement says there's regular conference meetings between the labor and the police. But there weren't.
No. How far along are they in the contract?
No idea.
No idea?
No idea. What kind of day? This is the mayor's decision. He called the group to negotiate who was going to be president. He gets to hire the lawyers, that's by charter.
Well, so...
One more time, please. John?
Just too bad that he's leaving the council in the dark and one of the largest expenditures that we have to make.
At least Kamal to be the police committee chair.
I mean, the entire council was left out, not just the chair. And we're voting to pay money that we know nothing about.
Well, I mean, you know it's for a blurb, just in terms of where the process is in terms of the contract negotiation, just the broad outline, you know.
Dominic, first?
Obviously, this is a new event. What was the past practice of the last round of lease contracts?
That's a good question. There's some debate about that.
Yeah.
I don't know with any certainty, but the people I consulted, which included former mayors, said that there was a wider group in attendance, including the police committee chair, treasurer, other members of the council.
When was the last time it was ordered up?
I'm sorry, what?
When was the last time it was ordered up?
The... Which, the contract?
Yeah, the last contract.
That was under Mayor Hamilton. And that was a very small group negotiated that. I mean, I do know, it's in the contract, it was part of that negotiation. There was the mayor at the time, her aide, the same attorney, and I'm not sure who else. Eileen, did you want to take it?
Yeah, I just wanted for process to make sure the council gets to vote on the contract, I believe.
Absolutely.
So we'll know all of the details of what's been negotiated and then be able to recommend changes, believe things. I don't know.
That's not that important.
They thought we were giving them the check first. I mean, we're giving them the money ahead of time. We can't cancel the check.
Right, but the person will have done the work, so it's fair to pay the attorney for the work done. If we don't like the product, they won't change it. I don't know.
We have some type of information first?
I'm not troubled by not having it upfront.
Usually you want a notification.
Well, I think we'll get it at the end. To insert ourselves along the process would probably make it take longer, is what I'm thinking of. But would...
I don't think we get a chance to, actually, change.
You can't change. You've given them the money.
I mean, we can vote up or down, but I don't think we really get a chance to revise it. I think that's one of the problems. We didn't even get a chance to talk with the mayor or anybody else in that group, to tell them what we would like to see negotiated. So we've been left out of the process pretty much 100%.
Is it possible, Andy, Tracy, and Tom, I'm asking if we can vote on the bills taking out the attorneys until we receive more information, something from the mayor, something?
I don't see why not.
Do you have to finish this one and then if this...
Do you have a motion, a second?
Right. So if we vote down the motion on the table, we can then revise it, take it up. So let's vote on whether we pay these bills as they're listed. Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Buoyan.
I already voted.
Alvin Garriga.
I vote no, so we can vote again to remove this bill until we receive more information so we know exactly what we're voting on. And if our negotiation is a part of it, I mean, that's what we're here for.
Collins.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
No.
Sauer.
No.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
I don't know. Okay, so I will entertain a motion now to pay the bills, removing this one line item. Is that good enough?
We need a motion to amend the list.
Right. A motion to amend the list, removing this one line item for the attorney. For the one item for the attorney, to run or...
That one. May I ask a question?
First, on the motion, first?
Sure.
So we're going to also cut the $800 out, but as in we do it for police?
Ah, good point. Let's amend it to just $12,000. Thank you. Motion? Tiffany, and a second? Calvin?
Just want to be clear, we're amending it to $100. We're paying $100.
Correct.
Not $12,000, correct?
Correct. Thank you. So we have a motion, a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
I'm going to vote no because I believe the person did the work in good faith and deserved to be paid at this point.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Nay, I agree. I think at this point, we should have asked sooner, you know, to be more involved. To do it now over a bill is... I don't think that's a way to do business.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Rosenthal.
I'm voting aye. And I think we need, just for the process sake, we should be involved to understand broadly what's being considered.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
I do believe in that we should, in good faith, pay this. I mean, I'd be happy to see the hours, the billable hours in more detail to vote on it, some more. But like, but right, I mean, as a professional, that'd be contracted. I don't think we should not pay it unless we see otherwise. But for, you know, I will vote aye to take it out.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye. And let me say, there was endless correspondence between myself, the mayor, and even this lawyer that we should be involved. So to answer your question, Dominic, there was plenty of requests to be part of this process. And I'd be happy to share all that email exchange with you to demonstrate.
I'm just saying, for us...
No, I understand. I've been told by other...
It would have been pushed if you all...
Excuse me a second. I've been told by other members of the council that they didn't want to see these kinds of exchanges. And... But it's there. And if you want to see it, I'd be happy to share it with you.
Let's just say, the lawyers will be paid. They could wait a little bit of time for us to get some information. And it's not that... It's not that big of a deal to make them wait a little bit to get some clarification, to respond to what is really the mayor's problem for not involving.
I have the responsibility to explain to our constituents what we're voting on, not just saying, "I don't know, the mayor did it."
Okay, back to the... I'm sorry, starting resolution. Can I... Resolution for commissioners of DEs. A roll call vote, please.
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
This is a resolution authorizing the city to apply to New York State DEC for a tree inventory community forest management plan, which will cost us no money. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye, and kudos to Hillary Hillman for putting this together, so thank you.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
The next... Excuse me, the next resolution authorizes payments for real property revaluation services for the 2019 tax status year. This is, I believe, our last expense, our last bill to gar. A roll call vote, please.
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the city to accept a grant for $100,000 for truck studies. As you know, Assemblywoman Barrett managed to include in our annual payments $100,000 extra in order to conduct a study about how to address the truck traffic within the city. Can I have a... Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
The next resolution authorizes... The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with the United States of America under the Americans with Disabilities Act. I hope you all had a chance to read this. There's a lot of things that have to happen on a timeline defined by the settlement. Did we have... We had an introduction, yeah. So can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Did you hear anything from the mayor about who he is appointing?
No.
Okay. Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
Resolution number six is a... Resolution authorizing transfer of funds within the DPW Cemetery, Water, and Sewer Departments. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Eileen? Second? Calvin? A roll call vote, please.
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the acceptance of donations to the Hudson Youth Department. In the past, we had resolved to allow them to accept donations up to $20,000, this opposite to $40,000. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Tiffany? Second? Go on. Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Buoyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollering.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
Now, a bunch of law... Once again, we're just putting it... There's a slight revision in the moratorium law, just to make it absolutely clear, but this does not affect hotels and existing B&Bs. May I have an introduction and a second, please?
Could you just point out where that is on the thing?
It's funny because the copy I got in the mail had it in bold.
Section 385. Section 385. 85.
Yep. Section, new hotels, hotels, and...
And then, I'm sorry, this will have to go back to the counting again?
No.
So the counting can do their feedback on the original law?
Well, there's no... I mean, basically, this is a minor modification to what they're receiving. I had a call from the county planning saying, "Do you really feel that we even need to receive this?" I said, "Yes, does anyone want to see the goal bridge?" But they were even questioning whether they needed a referral. But it was proven because it does touch on, you know, usage of that.
So may I have an introduction, a second, for this law? Tiffany? John? Now, may I have a motion and a second to lay the revised proposed local law on all of the members' desks? And we should have a motion? Tiffany, and a second? Kamal? So I guess the next step is a procurement?
It's not required, but you're not in the zone.
Okay. Oh, mayor, okay, yes, still... The next local law extends the lodging statute as it currently exists, but of course, once it is approved by the state, we can then change aspects of it. Going through the state again. May I have an introduction and a second? John, second? Go on. Now, may I have a motion and a second to lay the proposed local law on your desks? Tiffany? And? Second? John? Okay. Now, this last local law, I will have the... If you divide the city with the authority to award purchase contracts and contracts or services, I will ask Rob, the head of the finance, where this was discussed earlier, to explain this local law.
Sure. So we haven't updated our procurement policy in quite a while for the city. And as a matter of fact, I believe the processes were supposed to update it on an annual basis. So what this does is, it does two things. First, it does the best offer, where we will be on the same level as to what the New York State requirements are with regard to procurement. So we'll be at that same level. And anytime New York State increases or lowers their levels of procurement requirements, we'll just kind of stay in head and flow with the state. So we're kind of catching up to the state, which was in place in 2012, I think. The second piece of it is called a piggyback. So if you look under that section, like I just spoke about, this section sees the section E talks about piggybacking. So what this does is, it goes out to either states or organizations that have already been vetted and have done all of the bond review, the private RFP process. So there's a company like Source Vault, for example, that FIRE and DPW use. And what they do is, they've already kind of done all that legwork, and this just gives us the ability to piggyback on a federal or a municipal contract. So we don't have to do that extra work. And we've actually, if I'm not mistaken, Andy, we've... We're buying into the services already. It's just we've been constrained by the fact that this law's not in place. So the downside of it, the question came up in finance today, what the downside is? The downside is, we haven't done this a year ago. The upside is, we should be doing it now, so...
May I have an introduction and a second? Rob, Rich? Now, may I have a motion and a second to lay the proposed law on your desks? Kamal? Go on. Okay, a couple announcements before we move on. Just want to let you know that now, after working with the local radio station, WGXC will be doing what Dan has been doing all along for us, and that is streaming all committee meetings live on the website. So you can listen to all meetings at home. And they're also archived. It's not easy to find, but if you search around on the WGXC website, you'll be able to find it. I'll try to post it on the city webpage.
Because the meetings are being recorded now? I mean, other than Dan? Are the meetings being recorded here?
Yes. The OBEA has been so far, and other committee meetings. Since I got... Since we were able to develop the app. Also, in the current budget for next year, will be secretarial minutetakers. Because as the New York State... as the New York State publications on conducting public meetings advises us, chairman should not be taking minutes.
The chairman of...
And last announcement is, the Conservation Advisory Commission is looking for new members, and particularly, you know, the last count, almost every single one was from the first ward. They would love it if aldermen from the other wards could propose people who might be interested in being on the Conservation Advisory Commission. Right now, I think they've defined their mission for next year as trees, and all about trees, and every ward needs trees. So if you know somebody in your ward who has a passion for trees or conservation issues, please put their name forward. Okay, now, we have Mark Thaler here to discuss the presentation on the John Edwards possible adaptation reuse. And before he starts, I want to thank Peter Greenow sitting in the back there, who was instrumental in this whole RFP process and seeing it through, did a fantastic job helping relate the RFP to make it completely accessible. It was a totally open process with a lot of community participation. The proof of that is, we had eight really solid applicants, and Mark here is the winner. Sure shot.
Thank you, everyone. Just wanted to give a update on everything where we are, and after this presentation, we'll be submitting a draft report, but this, try to go through as quickly as possible. The study, obviously, is looking at the potential for the John Edwards School Building to be utilized for office space for the City Hall functions and the Youth Bureau, and potentially the Senior Center and other tenants that might fit in the building. We first, obviously, just for some context, the current City Hall conditions, we had reviewed... We had two meetings with the public, basically showed them, in essence, what the current conditions of the building are. We also asked for their feedback in terms of the various uses that they thought might also be good fit for the building. And subsequently, we had a second meeting, opened to the public, where we showed options where some of those things might fit in, in terms of adaptive use and fit. So the City Hall functions, really, you know, as we went through, we had looked at exactly what was in this building to start with, and what its, you know, issues are in terms of overcrowding of spaces and so forth, issues in regard to accessibility. We also looked at the youth center building, the conditions that were there. We looked at the program that, you know, that building also supports, both in terms of recreation, home, work areas, and, you know, kitchens, the gymnasium. And then really looked at the Edred School. So the study really had an assessment of the existing building and the property, what was, what we saw as issues that might have to be addressed if the city decided to purchase the building. Then we looked at sort of an adaptive reuse assessment, how could the various functions fit inside the building in terms of its footprint? We did look at sustainability issues. We had our public engagement, not only with the public, but we also had quite a number of meetings with some various not-for-profits, and then we're in the process of providing a draft study that will be the supporting analysis. So for the building itself, first off, you know, we took a look at the exterior. The building is in very good condition, both inside and outside. I mean, there are issues, as you will find with any building, but, you know, the building is sound, it's in good condition. It was built as a bomb shelter when it was constructed in 1964, so the construction is solid. Everything that we saw on the outside is in pretty good condition. There has been, you know, pretty good upkeep over the years. We can see, there was an addition. This end here was put on in 2003, so extended the building slightly. There are some things that have since been taken away. The playground that was in front of the building has now been sold. Some of the catering kitchen, or not catering kitchen, but the commercial kitchen equipment, some of that has been sold off as well. But it has some great spaces, the auditorium, for instance. You know, the kitchen is certainly in good shape at the moment. All of the classrooms, the computer center, these are all, you know, spaces that we took a look at. The gymnasium, locker rooms. So as we went through every single room in the building, the report will include if we saw something that was a particular problem. So, you know, if we saw that there was some floor tiles coming up, or if we saw some ceiling tiles or other issues, all the issues that we saw are documented so that you will have that information as well. The site is a fairly large site, so, you know, basically includes this whole area around here, right behind these houses, but all of the fields in the back, down the hill, including the school as well. The parking lot itself serves 72, and then is, of course, immediately adjacent to the city-owned lot across the street as well. And the site is actually really a beautiful site. You know, the fields down below were originally constructed as athletic fields. They've certainly, you know, been let go for some time, but certainly could be reused for some of that. They could be used for a variety of other things. The area on the hillside is nicely wooded, really connects well with trails that are in the area and so forth. So once we did all of that, we basically looked at, again, how do the various functions fit in the building? So the first thing we did was look at all of the City Hall functions, and we had looked at where those things might best fit within the building. We could, obviously, certain things could fit on one floor or another floor. For this study, we actually showed all of the City Hall functions on the upper floor. The upper floor is called Level D. When you come to the building and you're looking at the front of it, you see two stories, but it's actually four different levels. So in the back, you can see all those levels. Level A is the one that's lowest. Level D is the one that is the highest in the building. We looked at two different schemes. We had what we called Scheme A, so we understand that you could come into the building and do the minimal amount necessary to move into the space. So that's what we called Scheme A. Scheme B was taking that a little further, was sort of looking at creating some other programming opportunities or other things to really sort of maximize the building. So on the upper floor, there wasn't much change in between the two. Really, the only thing that we did is, we added a second elevator. The building currently has one elevator, so in Scheme B, we added an additional elevator. When we would take this building on, it would also need to be brought up to code because it is a change of use. So currently, the building code, it's an educational building, so unless you're keeping with that, you don't want it grandfathered, so there are some things that have to be brought up to code. So one of the things that that would affect would be sprinkling, so we would need to sprinkle the building as we went through. But as we looked at the functions of City Hall, I mean, they honestly fit like a glove to the one-floor plate on Level D. Everything basically fits there, including the one that's in red is actually offices for code enforcement, which is not currently in the building. So pretty much all of the departments would get some additional space, you know, on that floor plate, and it would work reasonably well. What we are showing here, in the front of the building, we had utilized a couple of the classrooms to become the county council chamber, and that could open to a third with a sliding partition or something, which could have overflow as opposed to the times when this chamber gets too full and you have to go out outside. It could also serve as a meeting room for other purposes as well. So again, all of the functions fit pretty well. So then, of course, there's a lot of other space that isn't necessarily needed to accommodate that. So what we show here in this bright color is actually what we've identified as future tenant space. This is not space that you need for the City Hall functions, the Youth Bureau. We are showing here the area for the Senior Center. That is roughly the same amount of space that they have now at the library. We do know that some of the other folks at the library would love to have that space if the Senior Center wasn't there. It certainly works for the Senior Center at the moment, but if they were here, you know, it could also work with, you know, some of the other larger rooms in terms of doing exercise and those sorts of things. So in Scheme A, again, this is all pretty much the same, except we've simply modified the one space a little bit. In Scheme B, we actually came out and created more of an entrance through the building. One of the things about the building, as it currently exists, it has, you know, multiple entrances, there's sort of no one sort of real entrance to the building, no sort of lobby, and that would be created here at this node. It does allow for access to the elevators. It would allow for, you could have somebody down there as sort of welcoming, and wayfinding. And we also opened up in the back, there's beautiful views out into the woods this way. We simply created an area that was sort of an outdoor deck out toward the back that way. So when we were looking at that level, you know, we end up with several different areas that could be utilized for other functions. So some of the things that had been brought up by the public was maker space, daycare, job center, community event, meeting space, all of those things were discussed. For daycare, if you were going to do daycare in this building, one of the things that, if you have any children that are under two and a half, you basically have to have immediate access to grade. So the areas on this floor and also on Level A would be able to be utilized that way. In some of the different people that we spoke with, you know, this would work, you know, for some of those different folks, and these spaces here actually worked very well for maker-type spaces. The thought was that the, these spaces in blue, including the auditorium and the kitchen, would become spaces that could be utilized by a variety of different groups that were in the building. They could also be something that could be utilized by the community as well. So looking at those various types of things, the maker space was something that was really sort of thought about as where you might have wood shops or metal shops, someplace where you could go and actually do some work. Also, ideas of apprenticeship programs where you could actually do training there. Again, this space that's in the front of the building, there's a very large room, has large ceiling space in there, would really work very well for that kind of function. And also, for some of the more creative art-type spaces, whether it be sewing or pottery or those type things, the smaller spaces that already exist on that floor also would work very well in those situations. Again, in terms of a kitchen function, something that could be utilized as a teaching kitchen, something where the seniors and the kids could get together, could also be utilized to support things like pancake breakfasts or other community events that might utilize the auditorium and the adjacent space. And then daycare, again, this whole wing over here could be utilized for daycare. It can actually be broken up in two different ways, depending on the tenant. It can either take that entire section, or it could take this L and this other piece could be separate. In either situation, the egress works very well, so you could get in and out of the building without, even if that one space was totally secure. And then similarly, the Senior Center was also right where you come into the building. And the building entry, you know, this image that's in the upper right is actually very similar to what you would find in sort of looking out toward the trees out by the fields out there. That would also allow space where people could gather and have wayfinding as well. It's difficult to tell, I know, on this slide, in the lower right, there's actually a sort of modeling image of what that could look like. The next level down is the B level, and this is actually an area that we thought would work very well for the Youth Center. It's not all the way down at the bottom, so when kids come in, it's not like they're going to the basement, per se. There's a feeling that you're close by. It's also something that we thought, you know, having this area here, the gymnasium is actually one story down, it's at the lowest level, so creating a connection here was something that we thought, you know, would be a good visual connection as well, where we could actually sort of open that up, and you could actually see right down into the gymnasium. So they could be observing that the kids that are in the space on that one floor on the B level, they can also be looking down at what's going on down at the end of itself. It also helps bring light into that level, which it doesn't otherwise get on this end of the building. And then we had looked, again, at the end of that floor plate, there was, again, some additional space that would be available, and we thought some not-for-profits that would be interested in doing sort of after-school programs and adult literacy programs and such actually fit there. We did speak with Greater Promise, who's just about that size, and they were very interested in, you know, there were... All of the organizations that we talked to were very interested. Of course, every one of them, you know, it all has to do with timing and everything else, but simply in terms of space and adjacencies, things would work very well. And again, this is sort of how that might be in the gymnasium, where we would open up some of that B level to the gym, so you could actually make that, those two floors connect a little better. At the lowest space, lowest level, rather, that's something, again... At the lowest space, lowest level rather, that's something, again, you have the gymnasium at the lower level, but also you could utilize the lowest level for daycare, and that's something that, you know, is just about the size that COR was looking for. And in the terms of the exterior, athletic fields, nature trails, community gardens are all things that would work very well. So for operating costs, we actually got operating costs for all of the current city-owned buildings, things that were spent on the buildings, including Youth Center, City Hall, Code Enforcement, Daycare Center Building, and the Chamber of Commerce. We also looked at all the heat and utility costs, custodial costs, and for all of the expenses for all those buildings, in the neighborhood of $108,000. So then we looked at, well, what would that be for J.L. Edwards? So we looked at their, presuming building expense cost, we didn't carry anything there because the assumption would be if we were renovating the building, we would have taken care of those immediate needs. The heat utilities, the heating costs for J.L. Edwards School are incredibly good. $12,000 for 90,000 square feet of building, partly because you have two stories built into the hillside.
It's $12,000 a month.
Pardon? $12,000 a year. Really, it's quite good, I thought.
It's a lit-in month house.
Yeah.
Kids are bringing it.
What the...
There's no lights.
What is high for the building was the electric costs, and of course, they had all these buildings and, or all these rooms, and every room obviously would be lit up. We prorated their electric costs to the area that, you know, all those things that we said were future tenant space, I just took that square footage out and then prorated it. So that would be about $40,000 for electric. I think that seems high to me, but... For custodial, we assumed one and a half FTEs, so roughly $75,000 a year. So that would bring you to about $128,000. But then, there's also, if we take those five buildings that are currently owned, and we assume that those were sold off, at the city's mill rate and the current assessed value of those buildings, that would bring in an additional $44,000 in taxes. So if you look at the 128 minus the 44, you know, it's, you have roughly $20,000 less if you had everything happening in J.L.E. relative to operating costs. Now, whether it's $20,000 more or $20,000 less, I mean, ultimately, it's pretty much sort of a break-even from operating costs. So other costs. Well, purchase price obviously is to be determined. You know, we don't know whether it's a dollar, we don't know whether it's $4 million for different things. So that obviously is a negotiation thing that would have to be worked out. We looked at the building and site rehabilitation. So this range is basically sort of, sort of the lowest that you might do versus everything that you might do. So hence the reason why the range is as great as it is. You'd probably be in the neighborhood of $5.5 million to do the minimalist sort of amount that would really get you in there. You have, there is asbestos in the building that has to be dealt with, so when you're dealing with any sort of ceilings or anything, we're putting in sprinkler systems, that's going to have to be dealt with. So all of our costs that we did, we prepared line-out and cost estimates, which will be in the report. You don't really spell out all of that. So, you know, it could be in that range. Then we have fixtures, furnishings, and equipment. Depends on how much of the existing furnishings you decide you want to move over. So, you know, probably in the range of $200,000 to $400,000, again, sort of what you're likely to do. Project soft costs, we included 25%. That would, of the costs above, that's really dealing with lawyer costs, finance costs, architectural engineering costs, all of those sort of soft costs that are part of a development project. So when all is said and done, the initial cost would be the purchase price plus between roughly $7 and $19 million. The assessed value of those five city-owned properties is approximately $3.5 million, which could potentially be sold to help offset some of the other costs. In terms of what grants are, that is really pretty open-ended, honestly. There, you know, that is something that, you know, you'd be looking for legislative items and other things. We did have a meeting with the State Historic Preservation Office and asked them what their thoughts were relative to whether the building would be considered for the National Register of Historic Places. They said they definitely thought that it would be, in which case, things like the Environmental Protection Fund for the, under New York State Parks, has funds up to $500,000 for rehabilitation, and that is something that, this area, I believe, is a three-to-one match. So you come up with 25%, they come up with 75%, so that's a, that's a pretty good grant. One of the other things that I think should be considered, and we've dealt with a number of not-for-profits that normally can't deal, can't take advantage of the historic tax credits, but if they sort of create a partnership with for-profits, it is oftentimes the case where those funds can be funneled back into the project. So for historic tax credits, there are two different tax credits. There's the federal tax credit, which is worth 20%. So if you have construction costs or whether you have architectural engineering costs, 20% of all of that is, if it was a $10 million project, you'd basically be saving $2 million right there. There's, in addition to that, there's a New York State also tax, or tax credit, which is also 20%. Because there are costs involved in lawyer fees and accountant fees and all the other stuff, basically, instead of 40%, you're generally netting about 30%. So in a situation like that, you could actually bring in a developer that helps get the building up and running, and then after five years, take the building over. Five years is their window that they have to own the building after they take tax credits. So that in and of itself, again, using the same spread of, you know, for Scheme 1 and 2, between $2 and $5.5 million are, from tax credits are available. So if you looked at that and said, okay, well, here's 2.1, there's 3.4, there's some unknown potential for grants, you know, that potentially brings you up into the $6 million range of what could potentially be, you know, assets put into the project. That still doesn't... Well, on the low end, it's roughly a $6 million renovation. There's still the purchase price, there's still some disconnect, but it's not as great as what might seem on first purchase. So with that, I'd be happy to hear any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Before we take questions, before Mark takes questions, I'd be reminded, this is not so much a design proposal as a potential, could it all fit and what else could we put in that building? So don't, there's no point in quibbling over, you know, design aspects at this point. Those will be all addressed later in the process, work to go through, just to, so we don't get bogged down in those kind of questions. Questions from the council?
I wanted to ask, when you was talking about the lights in the school, would it be considered, would it change the amount of cost? When you say like how the lights are always on because in school, what about those lights, those sensor lights, like on, always turn on when you come in with that saved cost?
Absolutely.
From this direction, where would the Senior Center be? How far a walk is that from this entrance?
Senior Center is, you walk straight in those doors, and it's right on the first floor, right there. So it's 50 feet into the building.
So Mark, you did the work with the ADA from here, and with that money, instead of renovating here, we can also turn that money into the, this project.
Correct.
I mean, rather than doing, whether it's $200,000 or $3 million, that money could be invested in...
Any money that would have to be spent on City Hall, any money that would have to be spent on just a youth center? I mean, that money obviously wouldn't have to be spent on those buildings, it could be spent on this one.
Now, you said there's, now, could it possibly be, this is the low end of the phases, is it possible to do the Phase 1 on the low end and work on a Phase 2, you know, to add down the road another elevator, and would that be an issue?
No, absolutely. Yeah, there's nothing, actually, the way that we worked with the building, it was all additive, so there wasn't anything that, you did not just start up here, but we wanted to sort of give the range. So, you know, when you're coming into the building, I mean, ultimately, if you decided to move forward and look at things, you know, closer, well, there are issues of, okay, am I going to have, you know, a carpet floor, am I going to have a hardwood floor? You know, I mean, just relative to all of the sorts of issues that, you know, if you're working towards a budget, there's a million different decisions that have to be made, you know, to get to where you're going. But the overall bones are there and the ability to utilize the building is there.
Counselors, our bridge?
So the big question mark is the price of the building, TBT. Is there any, does any, are there any range of estimates?
Well, they've asked for 2.9, but I don't know. Yeah, I'm not...
Yeah, I mean, we're in a negotiating position there, so...
Right. But anyone else know?
But presumably, if that was their asking price, that's the upper end.
Right. My understanding that they have to have, there's a certain bond fee to it. They have to have, I thought that 3.9 was that bond. You have to have at least that money for the bond in order to sell it.
I have heard that, but I don't know that.
Any questions from council?
This is the design question, so don't, don't get... Can it be considered, I know upstairs, we, there's a side office that anyone, any of the council members can use, but we would have to schedule it because other people use that office as well. Would it be, out of consideration, because other cities have an office for the majority leader and a minority leader, or even just an office for a caucus? Would that be considered as well?
Well, in the...
This is our question.
Oh, there was, there was something that addressed that.
Right. So there was a room right off of the council chamber that was basically the side of a classroom.
Okay.
That could be utilized for any types of meetings like that. And that was specific to the common council function in the building. There's also...
From the audience, any questions?
Yes. I wanted to understand the grants. Would that be for, if the building was landmarked on the National Register of the State?
The one specific grant that I spoke about, the Environmental Protection Fund grant, that you would have to be on the register to get that grant. There are many other grants where you don't necessarily have to be, you know, that are for other folks.
And then historic tax incentives, or what do you mean by that?
That you would also need to be, that you would definitely have to be on the register.
I'm having trouble seeing that this building was qualified for that.
Well, the person that I spoke with was the head of the unit at the State Historic Preservation Office.
Is there a distinguished architect associated with it?
Pardon?
A distinguished architect associated with it?
It is Sergeant Webster from Jaffa Foley, which was a very famous school architect in the mid-century, and it is, I mean, most people think of historic being older, but...
I know, it has to be 50 or so.
Yeah, which it is.
Which it is.
And, but it also needs to have, you know, its character, so if this building had been modified many, many, many times between then and now, it probably wouldn't be eligible. But it hasn't really changed since it was started.
So I think it would be difficult to think of it as distinguished on its own, and I would not rely on getting this status for it. I think you should not include that in your determination.
Well, that, that information came specifically from the State Historic Preservation Office.
Well, you've got to get the federal government to go on.
I understand.
And I don't think that...
Any other questions from the audience? Okay, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mark, I wanted to talk about...
So I have $100, right? Yeah, I know. Yes. So daycare was a new sandwich that has a key head start in classroom.
Any other...
And the other office that deals with education, would it still be considered grandfathered?
Definitely. Will you wait for after the minute? Any other business from the council? Any new business from the audience? Yes. Reverend Grant?
Reverend Cross. In that vein, I'd like to thank you, excuse me, be shorter, but nevertheless, I'd like to thank you for all the work you did for our walk-in parade last week. You helped to make it a very, both very successful. Thank you.
You're welcome. With that, may the motion adjourn.
Go.
Second, go on. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll go.